Everybody rise from the platform.
We are divided on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the board or roll call.
Eric Westgar.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Bolton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, we have a public forum. If you want to talk about something other than the community center, which we'll let you do when we get to it, otherwise you can be welcome to say what you'd like. Is this where we talk about the rezoning?
We'll have a public hearing on that.
Yeah, it's coming.
Got it.
Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections? Motion to approve or second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bolton, yes. Mohler?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, we have a one bullet permit.
Yep, it is approved and ready to go.
Motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Open the public hearing on the proposed annexation of lands into the city of Lakeview. Any public input?
Just a little explanation on this, that the annexation is proposed of a 36-acre parcel that is abutting to the west of the Avapco property. Okay, so this would be a potential expansion area then for hopefully an Avapco project in the future. This is, would be 100% voluntary annexation and would just require action of the city council. Brett's here, John if you'd like.
Brett, did you want to say anything? Avapco?
Yeah, I mean, I can just tell you that we've entered into a contract to purchase the land. This is the final step that we need to fulfill the contract and after that we would be set to close. You know, Avapco, they broke ground in 1999 and here we are 20 years later and we have fulfilled and occupied all current space that we have. And so this was a logical area for us to continue future plans. This was approved by the highest level at our corporate office. Matter of fact, one of the founding presidents of Avapco made this a mission that this is what he wanted to do because of the growth that our plant's been able to have in 20 years. And so here we are. You know, I can't say it'd be a year from now, I can't say it'd be 10 years from now, but we wouldn't buy it necessarily just for sitting on it for another 20, I would assume. I know everybody's been after me on saying, when are we breaking ground? And I would be, I would not be telling you the truth if I had a date in mind and I don't. So it's kind of where we're at.
We look forward to whatever happens.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you. Any more on the public hearing? Proposed public hearing. Resolution 2046, resolution approving the annexation to motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Public hearing now is open for rezoning of the 36 acre parcel rest of Avapco.
Yeah, just the explanation of that is that any newly annexed lands that come into the city come in zoned as R3. So then they, Avapco and the current owners are hogs. They have then requested that this property be rezoned from R3 to industrial.
Close the public hearing. Resolution 2047. So move. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Open the public hearing on the proposed rezoning of the parcel east of the city's old wastewater treatment plant.
In this, in this case, the proposal for rezoning is part of that ag land that's owned by Larry Hauser and it's east of the city's old sewer plant. Or you can also think of it as then north of Bob Moore's house and then really between Moore's and over there to the sewer plant property. It's zoned as R3 right now and the proposal would be to rezone it to industrial, industrial to allow the construction of a communication tower. And this has been presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have recommended in favor of the rezoning, but as a conditional rezoning, that it would only be rezoned when it was apparent that the communication tower project was going forward.
So Scott?
Hello?
I have, yeah, this is Catherine Richardson.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing that I'd ask is that we need to know something about an environmental impact because I noticed looking at the plot of land that it's close to the Great Blue here in Brookery and I think it's a flyway for a lot of the large water birds that come in and out of Lake. So I don't know whether the company that would be structuring this thing has to do that as part of the building, but I just think maybe we ought to be aware of that issue going forward.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Thanks. Hey, I guess by way of explanation, first of all, Larry's the property owner, you can have Larry give explanation on that, but also on the Zoom call, Kristi Icorn is with the tower company. So that we would open that up for comments from Kristi for about, a little bit about what the proposed project would be. Can you?
Can I unmute you?
I'm gonna unmute you there, Kristi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you tell us your plans?
Great. Well, we're just in the very first stage of our project, which is to find a location in the general area that would be acceptable for a tower. Once we find a location and we have a property owner who's interested in having a lease on their property for the tower, then the next stage is going to be an environmental study or what we call the one process. That's when we start doing our engineering and we start getting into the details of the construction of the tower. We aren't in that phase yet. We still have different, multiple properties that we have been looking at. We liked this particular property because it was mostly industrial zone. In fact, when we first started looking at it, it was all industrial. It was close to the sewer treatment plant. It was close to the highway. It was away from larger residential areas, even though, you know, we noticed that there was the residential property to that southeast, but that's kind of why we were looking at it. And it was a higher point close to the highway. So that's where we are. We're in those very first stages of trying to find an adequate location for a tower.
Thank you very much, Kristi. Nate, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so I'm kind of speaking on behalf of my dad here and when we talked about planning and zoning, we talked, there was a little concern about, you know, devaluation of property value and everything like that. Well, upon doing a little investigation, I started doing some digging and there's quite a bit of health.
I just can't hear anything on my end.
Issues that come along with living within certain ranges of a cell phone tower. And if you Google them, it's pretty easy to find, starting, I mean, as you can see with the highlighted stuff, it keys in on being within 350 to 500 meters, which is approximately 500 yards, something like that. And it goes in on the first page and talks about, you know, these are conclusive studies that have been done over the last 10 years and people that are, places that are living within that range of a cell phone tower. Talks about how, you know, insomnia, dizziness, I mean, you guys can see all that. And as you flip through and go towards the back, I highlighted a couple of the kind of daunting facts to me. And if you live within 350 meters of a cell tower, you're 10 times more likely to get cancer than what you would if you didn't. And it says right there on the bottom, you know, highly significant increase in cancer those living within 500 meters. I, I mean, I can't imagine that anybody would sign themselves up to live, you know, where you're 10 times more likely to get cancer. I mean, that's kind of a, I guess in my opinion, a little unsettling. I mean, I know I wouldn't want to live there, I wouldn't want my kids to live there. And that doesn't even include all the other, you know, health issues that are caused by it. And this isn't even touching on the 5G, which they have, it isn't even around yet, which according to the studies, they think is going to be 10 times more hazardous to our health than what 4G is, but, and whoever's to say that, you know, I mean, I have no idea what the tower's gonna be like, obviously, but I definitely think it needs to be taken into consideration. I don't think anybody would willingly, you know, live in a situation where they are gonna have health concerns. And I can't imagine why we would let someone do that. I mean, there's plenty of suitable locations for the tower that are over 500 meters or further from somewhere somebody lives. I mean, if you're, I guess I look at it like, if you're okay with it and it's your property and you decide to put a tower up next to it, that's one thing, but when, you know, you don't want to subject yourself to it and you're kind of stuck, I mean, that seems to be a totally different issue in my, in my thoughts anyways. And these are, I mean, there's, if you look on the internet, there's literally studies everywhere talking about the negative health effects of living within that range of a tower. And I just thought, I mean, the planning and zoning was not aware of this, I didn't have this information. They were just talking about, you know, the devaluation of property, which in itself is an issue, but, I mean, I think this is a far greater issue than, I don't know, I'd like you guys to take that into consideration when you vote on it. I mean, I can't imagine anyone that would subject themselves knowingly to that.
So Scott, this is Catherine again, from the planning and zoning. I think we made it conditional because we really didn't have much data about anything that was going to be going forward. So I guess one of the ideas is to be able to get all the data before a decision is made by the city. So that's why we put it in condition. And if we don't have all the data, then maybe we better get all the data. Does Kristi have anything to comment on?
That's what I was gonna say. Kristi, do you have anything, information on the same as Nate had or what?
Well, I'll tell you, I only heard Catherine that conversation. I heard that there's concerns about the distance of residential from the tower, but I didn't hear the specific distance. We have to meet all federal and state regulations for siding of the tower and we have it, we don't have it, we would never side our tower in a place that we knowingly or any state or federal regulations knowingly believes that it's gonna cause a hazard to that residential area. We can show studies to, that talk about that if we need to go through another process. I don't have that information available to me right now. I did hear at the very end, when I first got the microphone back on, that there were lots of studies out there that said it being within a certain distance was harmful to the residents of that particular property. I don't know of those studies, so I really couldn't speak to those. I do know that we have towers all over the place that are less than 500 feet from residential properties.
Anybody else? Dale?
Don't we have some towers now less than 500 feet away from residential properties?
That's gonna be my comment, everybody's thinking, yeah, all of them.
Yeah, like stuff by the water tower was that one now, right? Yep. Nursing home. Nursing home by Denny's.
No more public input? Close the public hearing. Okay, resolution 2048 is approving that request. What would the council like to do?
Well, I guess I'm with Catherine, I kind of, I want P and Z to take a look at this, get their feedback back on it.
Seems to me that if they have to go through an environmental study and they have to jump through all the federal and state hoops, I don't know what more we would ask them to do.
Right.
It's not like there aren't any laws about this.
So Kristi, can you proceed down, down an environmental, down the road of the environmental study and a little site design without us having rezoned the property yet?
Yes, we can. I should say again that we are still in the preliminary stages of choosing a site. So we have not chosen this as the site that we will be building in Lakeview. I know Larry was moving forward because I think it came to a surprise to him as well when we were looking for the tower location and we realized that where we were gonna put it, there was a zoning line going right through the middle of it. And so in order to clean that up and to move forward with that, we plan ahead in moving forward with the zoning change. We have not signed a lease with anybody yet for the tower. The next, our, what we understood was that the next step would be if we were in an industrial zoning district, that we would need to get an industrial permit from the city and that we'd have to go through a hearing process like this, where we would have more engineering information and we can answer more of those specific questions. If that's not the case, then, you know, we are definitely happy to answer all of these questions again at another public hearing, once we have solidified that this is the site we're gonna move forward with.
Kristi, can you give us any input as to what this benefit this brings to our community or the surrounding area?
Well, this is for AT&amp;T and they're looking for more opportunities to provide better service in the area, to have more coverage and more capacity. And they're also looking to do that in a cost-effective way. And so for them, building a tower helps them to do that.
So is this more of a traditional cell phone, cell tower then, Kristi? It's come up as broadband and it's, can you just describe what this is?
Yeah, this would be more of a traditional cell tower as it's going to be built in the next three years. It would have fiber that runs to the tower and it would use radio waves to pick up the signals and then transfer those signals through fiber that is in the.
Kristi, if we gave you two weeks, could you come up with some more information on this for the council?
I don't know that two weeks is going to be time for us to provide more information because we haven't chosen this as the site that we're gonna move forward with.
Okay.
We have multiple sites that we're looking for, so we haven't put our resources into the site to do the environmental studies, to do all the additional, the engineering to answer a lot of these sorts of specific questions about this site. We're just looking for an appropriate site to locate the tower. The reason again that we looked here originally was because we were told that if we wanted to be anywhere in Lakeview, we needed to be in an industrial district. So we looked here. We were told that we should look north of the highway because most of the residential was south of the highway. We were told to look north of the highway because that's also where there's other towers that are currently located. And so that's why we were in this particular, this particular area. But again, we have not said that this is for sure the site we're moving forward with.
So what's wrong with us making that decision when you come up with your decision on where to locate it?
I'm just saying, we won't, we won't have additional information in two weeks to provide at another hearing.
We're in no hurry. I just, my concern is about this cancer, is that, is that true or do these cell towers do that or are we opening ourselves up to problems?
We don't have any evidence that the cell towers are causing cancer.
Okay.
It would seem to me that if they find it to be difficult to locate here, they probably won't.
I, I could add, wouldn't you guys were talking about how long it would take? I mean, we were, I believe, on our end, you know, and Larry should have some feedback too on this. You know, we'd be happy if you needed to table it until our company made a decision on whether or not they're gonna move forward on the site. And then we can come back and talk about it once we have the decision made.
I think that's what we'd like to do.
So I have a question.
Yes, Larry.
If they decide to move forward and they come to you guys and you shoot them down, what, I mean, you wasted their time kind of moving forward. If you're gonna shoot it down, either gonna, you know.
But if we rezone it now and then they don't locate here, then what do we do, rezone it back?
Well, that's actually, that was actually the deal about recommending this as a conditional rezoning, that it's only rezoned when it would be apparent that the project's going forward.
How about tower?
Yeah.
If they don't build the tower, it goes back to R2 or R3?
R3.
How much is the lease worth? How much is it to lease? What are they offering for the lease? That's between Larry and him, I would think. I don't know. We aren't gonna get anything out of it. Maybe better cell service.
There's a lot of uncertainties, it seems like to me.
It sounds like it doesn't look but a cell phone tower anyway. Danny's gonna get cancer quicker than anybody.
I don't, I don't think it'd be, you know, what if we took all the cell phone towers down?
I don't think that's the issue. I mean, there, it's the fact of knowingly not being, I mean, when you choose a location to live and there's a tower right behind it before you buy or build that house, that's your decision and then you're okay with that. I mean, when someone else is making that decision for you, that's the difference. I mean, when, you know, and she's, there's thousands of these studies that are on the internet. I mean, go home and Google it, they're literally everywhere. And if you get done looking at that, there's not a single person, I mean, you can't tell me that you'd just be like, oh, you know, I'm 10 times more likely to get cancer by living there or, you know, have all these other adverse health effects. That's the problem, is that the decisions, you know, somebody else's health is being, the decision is being made by someone else. I mean, if the tower was there prior to the construction of a house, it's a different story.
It seems to me that it kind of goes back to the, to the hog lots and the confined.
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
Sure. And they don't let them build them right next to their people's houses.
How far away do they have to be?
It depends on if they own the ground. I'm not sure exactly what the regulations are.
How many?
1500 feet, they can't get any closer than 1500 feet.
And that probably came years after they started putting them out.
And I'm like, we need towers, I'm not saying that. I mean, that's not the question at hand. Like, I, I'm 100% all for cell phone towers. I, nobody likes bad service, it's annoying as hell. But at the end of the day, I mean, I think there's a lot of suitable locations that wouldn't have an effect on anybody else. I mean, I think that, you know, you get over towards the nursing home and, you know, anything on that side of town, you're up higher, it's gonna have better range. I mean, that's, that's my whole problem with it. I mean, it's not, it's not the actual tower itself. I mean, yeah, we need it. I mean, you know, put it out, you know, wherever, as long, if it's, but it's right there is the problem. I mean, literally within a stone's throw where somebody's living.
So what are you gonna do about the cell phone towers that are there now? The one on the water tower, the one up by the nursing home?
Well, I don't live there. And if I chose to buy that house, then I would already know that they were there. That's the whole point.
You're not too far away from those towers.
And that's not the, I mean, that's, the point is, is it's within that range. I mean, would you put it right next to your house?
Derek Brody put it right next to his house.
And that was his decision.
This is kind of my decision here.
You're right, you're exactly right. It's your decision to put it next to a place where you don't live. I mean, he lives there. I mean, that's the whole problem. I mean, that's, that's, that's the, that's the issue, I guess.
Everybody said what they're gonna say? Most of the internet's correct, right? Nothing lies.
Well, it's an accredited source.
Close the public hearing.
Would've done that before.
I'll get it for her, I want to make sure everybody knew it. Okay. Okay, we have resolution 2048, what would the council like to do? A motion one way or the other, or whatever.
Well, maybe we ought to table it, they're this much concerned about it until she gets out more information or makes up their mind if they're gonna put that tower here.
And then that'll, that'll also give the P and Z more time to look at this, anything else they want to look at, because they haven't had a chance to do that, plus any other we can say. If they decide to do it, then they'll be doing it right now. All right, peace also.
Any motion one way or the other, do something?
I did. I made motion to table it.
Do a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Just point of clarification, so you table until we have additional information or table for a timeline or what?
Well, she, her timeline, but our, our more information.
I'd just like to. Planning and zoning too.
Right.
Okay. They come back with another recommendation, then go ahead and pass it then.
Okay, so the motion would be to table until we receive more information from the provider and to have the planning and zoning look at it again.
Roll call.
Okay, Reese. Bolton?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Stankin?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Kristi, did you get that? Did you hear that?
I did, I got it. It's tabled until we can provide further information on the tower itself.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have contract for region 12 on our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, just that the, the contract was in your packet, everything looks to be appropriate, what we would expect, cost is $10,000.
The motion to approve the contract?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, in the CDBG housing grant program, we have a request for number four payment from the state.
Yeah, just that we would approve the submittal of the, of the drug request to the state for payment number four and then also authorize payment number four to region 12. See the total on that. $24,000 something? $24,004. Again, reimbursed through that, through that grant. So yeah, if we can have a motion.
We need a motion to approve the request?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Anybody like a motion to approve the payment?
Yeah, if we could, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Roll call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Okay, we need to approve the payment to Dale and Kristi under development agreement?
Yeah, just that, so we had this development agreement with Dale and Kristi to, that they would develop that old stock bin site and create at least the four residential lots, that's, that's all plotted and done. And that the, they would remove the bin site and that they would have the two new structures built by the end of the year. And really, everything's come together very nicely on that and everything looks real good there. The incentive payment is $8,000 and the incentive payment would come from TIF funds.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dale, it looks really nice up there, you did a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it all.
Commedia.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to the Hometown Pride Community Center Concept Plan. Mary, did you want to say something quickly? Mary, did you wanna say something quickly?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mary Ludwig. I'm on the Hometown Pride Board for the last five years, working on the community center project for the last five years. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I think everybody here was able to hear last week when you heard all the information about the proposed Lakeview Community Center. You had a chance to review and analyze the business plan, which Scott has shared with you, and that included the financials, which we worked on diligently to get input from experts from around the area. And I want you to share with me tonight and really set your mind to knowing that the community center is more than just a building for Lakeview. It will be an economic boon to our community and to our region. As you consider the project tonight, I encourage you to reflect on the great success Lakeview has enjoyed, really due to the partnership that we've had with you as our city council and with our many community volunteers that we have in this great town, like Hometown Pride and many others. Each project that we have embarked on, from the Stone Pier Concerts, all the way up to the Splash Pad and many in between, have helped Lakeview move forward. Together, we have built a community that provides numerous opportunity for both our residents and our visitors. It is vital that we continue that progress as a community. I invite you to take the next step in building the future for Lakeview. Now is the time to keep our foot on the gas, to push forward and to build for a better tomorrow. Your vote tonight is a vote to support economic development, it is a vote for tourism, it is a vote for future generations, and it is a vote for progress. I look forward to hearing your feedback.
Thank you, Mary. Scott's gonna run over some information here.
Yeah, I do wanna go through some of the stuff that's included in the, in the council packet. Starts on page nineteen in the council packet. Where it's, first of all, before we get into that too much, I know that, that folks are real interested in about where, what's the, what's the source of, of all of the data and how did we ever come to the, to the conclusion on usage and this type of stuff? I'd highlight six different things that, that the, that the community had done and worked with. And these, so these would be sources. The Small Business Development Center, they worked with us on, on business planning and financial modeling. The University of Iowa study, we had a, it was, was a senior capstone project from some engineering students about, about project design and, and putting some, the floor plan together about what a proposed building is, and that floor plan is, is still the one that's being utilized. Iowa State University, through their farm, food and enterprise program, they also did a lot of, of background work for us as far as, as study, market study on, on community centers. So they did a lot of market study on, on larger community centers and then also helped us out with, with proposed usage numbers as well as cost of materials. Shelley Gribing was the, was the fourth source of, of information that we have. Shelley is a community center marketer and, and she has done lots of work with some regional community centers and is well aware of, of what they, their bookings and how they operate. Fifth thing is, is actually the one study that we, we did pay to have done this first go around, and that's, was a study done by the Woods Consulting Group. And out of that study, really, the, the best thing that came out of that was a pretty in-depth ask of the businesses around here about what, what the business use of a, of a community center might be. And then also, the sixth thing that I wrote down was contacting other community centers and then actually going to visit several of them. So there, and there's a list of, of all the places that have been, that have been contacted. So, couple things about structure and, and management. As we, we work through this plan, just know that it is proposed that it would be owned by the city of Lakeview. And oversight would be conducted through, through a citizens board. And it would be, the citizen board would be appointed by the cit, the city council. Talk about the location, the location is proposed to be out there around Towelstone. On the next page, on page twenty, these are, it does list the ones, the community centers that they had toured in, in Orange City and Sue Center, Everly, Holstein, and also went to the Briggs Wood Conference Center. Then also talked with representatives from Manning, Templeton, Dennison, Grand Junction, Wilton, as well as then Carrollton and Kings Point. So as they think about marketing this, the marketing area that is proposed here is, is thirty miles. In some of the studies, you get used a smaller marketing area of, of ten miles and then also have a two-tiered marketing area that then includes thirty miles. Page twenty-one just shows a comparison of the, of the venues, so that you could see the venues in the area, the, the capacity of them, and, and then rental fees and, and do they have audio visual, that type of stuff. Page twenty-two just goes through the, the bookings. And so if you look at the booking goals for year one, these are, these are the same then that's, that's listed in this document. So if, if you've seen the, the community center document, this was all handed out at the, at the public hearing, all of the information in here is the same thing that's in the business plan, it's just compiled up a little higher. So where this, this does show the ninety-eight uses then of it, of the facility for year one, and a lot of those though are smaller corporate meetings. And again, that, that number comes from the, from that Woods study. If you can look at the next page just briefly, on twenty-three talks about operations and staffing. It is proposed that this would operate just with part-time staff, having a general manager, estimated about twenty hours a week, as well as having bartenders and then a custodian. Bottom half of page twenty-three talks about the funding and financing. See total construction costs, total project cost on this, including contingency, land, startup costs, everything, one point four five million dollars. And then, as you think about the sources of where, where the money would come from to pay for that, there's a, a table on the next page that shows some of the funding options, but I would, I would distill that down even further. For really, there's three things. This would propose that it would have some, some city financing in it, five hundred thousand dollars of TIF funding, grants that it requires significant amount of grant, grant fundraising and, and then private fundraising. You know, the way this is, is written, it says about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in grants and, and two hundred thousand dollars in, in private fundraising. And as we get to the, to the end of, of the discussion tonight and know that they're, they'll ask about proceeding forward with fundraising, what they're really saying is, we'd like the city to, to commit some funds, this, this TIF, TIF money, but it's very contingent about whether the Hometown Pride and the community center folks have, have good fortune in raising all the money. And that would be that they need to raise that total of nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, whether it's grants or private funding then. So when they're asking for a commitment from the city, it's a contingent commitment. At the middle of page twenty-four, the operational data, rental fee is proposed to be seven hundred fifty dollars. Seven hundred fifty dollars for the entire building and a hundred dollars for the small meeting room. And then the timeline on there does ask for a vote of support from the city council so that fundraising can get underway. One of the, one of the biggest aspects of this is to apply for that Great Places Grant. And that the grants have, have ranged from, from two hundred to four hundred thousand. You see, we have three hundred fifty thousand knocked up in, in that funding source. And that grant application is next fall. So it really, it allows us a year to continue to work through other grant sources as well as work on private fundraising side of things. Big pullout sheet is where you get the chance to break down a lot of the numbers and, and be able to see what a projection might be. In this case, it's month, month by month, I wouldn't, you know, month by month doesn't necessarily maybe matter so much as the totals. So as you look at the, on the revenue side of things, as we're looking at receptions, that being weddings, this does have fifteen weddings proposed for that, for that first year. And again, know that there's a source of all of this stuff. And the source on this one, Shelley Gribing had, had that estimate, and then also the Iowa State study had that, had that same estimate. Also, just real important to the financial success, and we just gotta be very forthright about this, but important to the financial success of this is alcohol sales. And that's where a lot of the, of the money would come for, for continued operation. Again, you look at the number of meetings, this, this calls it meetings, that would be like business meetings, and that says fifty-nine, that's from that Woods study. On, on the back then of, of the big page, you can see a little more breakout about, about cost. Just a few things then, as, as we take a look at this, this nicely printed piece here, and Andy Bennett did design on this in, in the Hometown Pride Committee. Worked through it, got all the information for it. But, couple things on that. Again, as, as you flip to the, to the centerfold, I know, I know that folks are, are real interested in the cost of, of the building and, and how it might be funded, and again, really funded by those, the three sources, TIF, grant and fundraising.
Does anybody want one of these? Everybody's got one.
Pie charts on there of about the annual revenues and the, and the annual expenses. These are a visually easy to understand way to compile everything that's included in that profile. So as you're looking at the, at the annual revenues and you see that there's receptions, again, that's weddings, and there'd be fifteen of them, and that, and the proposed revenue is sixty-five thousand dollars. Couple things on the questions, and there's question and answers on the, on the back couple pages of this. Couple things that I wanna highlight because this certainly involves the city. What are the anticipated monthly utility bill? The one thing about that for sure is that this would be proposed, again, to be owned by the city. The electricity rate would be the public authority rate, which is, which is lower than, than the regular rate. What if the facility does not make a profit? And it is proposed then that the, the facility would be supplemented with revenues from hotel motel tax, but of course, only, only if needed. A question had come up about size of parking lot, and, and there is a crushed rock parking lot that's proposed, and this says a, the parking lot size two hundred and ten vehicles. Any, any questions from the mayor or council?
If anybody from the public would like to say something, please stand up by the podium, raise your hands. You gotta get up there so they can hear you. They can't hear you on TV.
My name is Don Dur. I've been a resident of Lakeview for a little over twenty years. And my wife and I both agree, it would be nice to have an event, a community center, event center, some, some nice places in here referred to as an event center. But you're talking about the rent of seven hundred fifty dollars for the large room. And we did a little checking ourselves, and there's four communities within fifteen miles of Lakeview that have similar buildings or complexes that are very comparable, and there's only one of them that charges a little bit more than half, and that's four hundred dollars for, for an event. The other three are all three hundred dollars or less. Now, you come up with a figure of, you said ninety-nine, you said ninety-eight, if you add them up, it's ninety-nine. Uses in a year's time. We went to the same four locations and asked them to give us an average of their last five years of the usage of their hall. And the, the three highest ones said between twelve and fifteen events. So that's at the very best forty-five events. The fourth event center said six to eight. So now we're talking about fifty-two, fifty-two events. For all four of these combined, where in the hell are we gonna come up with ninety-nine events for this community center?
So can you tell us what four you're referring to?
Brita, Odable, Wall Lake and Sack City.
So do they hold? How many people do they hold?
Approximately three hundred to four hundred. Brita holds about five hundred. They're all very comparable. Some are larger, some are smaller. Let me refer to a, an example of your fifty-nine, your fifteen receptions. And there's, there, those fifteen receptions are gonna bring in sixty-five thousand dollars, right? So you divide that by fifteen, that means each one of those events is gonna bring in four hundred, four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Now first, they're gonna pay the seven hundred and fifty dollars already. So that leaves approximately thirty-six hundred dollars less to be generated from that event. Say it's a wedding of three hundred people. That's not the smallest wedding, and it's not the largest wedding, it's an average. Now, at thirty-six hundred dollars, the bar is going to be selling drinks at approximately three dollars a drink. They're probably gonna make a dollar and eighty cents a drink. So that means they have to sell two thousand drinks to this wedding party. Now, we got a few kids there that don't drink and a few adults that don't drink. You break that down, that's an average of eight drinks per person, that's left in that hall. Is that realistic? Is that realistic? Eight drinks per person.
Do you have the calls from Lake and Carroll?
No, I haven't. I, we took communities that were within fifteen miles of Lakeview. Now, if you're gonna get ninety-nine events, but these four centers or these four locations over the past five years have averaged only fifty-two events all combined over the last couple of years, where are we gonna get ninety-nine events? Does this committee have a, a secret of as far as something really big gonna happen in Lakeview or what?
I think we try to compare it to like Storm Lake and Carroll have motels. Brita doesn't have a motel. Neither does Odable.
I don't think, I, it's, it's, it's great, the location, to put it at a motel and the other restaurant hotel, but I don't think that's gonna make the difference of, of that many. You know, and, and I'd like to read from the council meeting back in January two thousand seventeen. Councilor Walton read a statement detailing, detailing his views on the proposed event center. He stated that there is too much risk if the city owns and operates an event center. He noted concerns he heard from the public about the need to subsidize operations and relay information about the financial losses the event center in Dennison is experiencing. So later that evening, a motion was made by Walton, seconded by Huss, to put the issue on the ballot in November of two thousand seventeen to allow their residents to decide whether to have a city-owned or financed event center. On a roll call, those approved with Huss, Reese and Walton, those against, Moller and Steinkamp, motion carried. What happened since?
What happened then?
What happened since then? Has that ever been on the ballot?
The, the legal side of that, Don, is that the, the allowable use of referendum deals with financing. It does, it doesn't allow the use of referendum for question.
Well, doesn't this, doesn't this motion mean anything?
It's not legal, he couldn't do it. Unless we're, unless we're proposing to issue debt for that.
I don't know. Like I say, it would be great, but it's gonna be a big expense to the city. It's gonna be a big expense to the taxpayers. And the taxpayers in Lakeview, the citizens of Lakeview deserve to be told the truth upfront. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
My name's Mike Frank, and I agree, community center would be a great asset to this community, but it's also a great debt. And I think that, like Donnie says, the citizens, they're gonna be the ones that are paying for this debt when your revenues, the number you guys are showing, don't come forth. You take these elderly citizens that are on a fixed income, ain't gonna be able to afford that extra money. They aren't gonna patronize that place, but they're gonna be the ones paying for it. They aren't gonna patronize that place, but they're gonna be the ones paying for it. You know, and, and as far as hiring help, talk to Sandy out at Country Club. She's sure to help. Dollar General, Cathy's can't get help. Grocery stores short of help. How are you gonna hire a part-time help? All these other establishments can't find help. Uh, we had Lakewood. It's, it's been closed just over 14 years now. My wedding was the second to last wedding there. That was in September of 2006. The community didn't support it then, and it was a hell of a lot cheaper to operate back then than what it is today. Sandy tried everything she could out there to make it go away. Cards, weddings. It wasn't feasible. Times have changed. You know, Lakewood years ago, 25 years ago, was a happening place. Seven days a week. Uptown Main Street. It was happening place. You couldn't find a parking place on Main Street 25 years ago on Friday or Saturday night. You drive down it today and it's, times have changed. Society has changed. My last comment is, there's two councilmen that are on this committee, and if this would come to a vote, I think they should abstain from voting. It's a conflict of interest.
Well, that, that doesn't make any sense.
Anyone else?
It's not a conflict of interest.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, my, my name's Paul Hollis. I'm not as well-prepared as they are. I'm just gonna tell you about, I've been involved in a lot of projects where we raise money and did the good things for that city of Lakeview. I'll start off with the first one that we, that I was in charge of was, uh, bringing sewer and water out on the east end. We had about four or five people that were really against it. We had 50 that wanted it. Those four or five made all kinds of hell, objecting, they get on the paper and everything. We have the people that are for it are afraid to get up and say anything because they don't wanna get heard. The second one is, uh, when we, you know, like, when Dale did his project out there, you know, there was a lot of people didn't want that. But look at how nicely that turned out. I mean, there was lots of objection, but there was people that were on the fence and were for it. Uh, let's see, what was, the other one is, uh, when we wanted to move the road for our new development out there and on the dredging project. There was a lot, we had our, save our shores trying to keep us from moving the road and doing that project. Look at how many houses have been built out there, you know? Nobody thought that that road was feasible and moved, we moved it. Look at how much revenue that's brought into the town. Out on our side of the lake, we've had six houses at least that have changed hands. Most of them are on the market, except for a couple. That go on, you know, they're on a week and they're sold and they're going for 650,000, 500,000. It's all because people wanna live in Lakeview. You know, if we don't progress, people don't wanna come here. And that's why we're a happening community, because we do all this stuff. If we didn't do it, it'd be, I don't hate to back on the town, but like Odible or something. We do have the lake. That's what helps us, but I guess that's all I got to say. I just say I'm for it.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Rich, go ahead.
Donnie said, uh, Rich Schultz, Don, Donnie and these guys, Mike said most everything I was gonna say. My only issue is the government run. What, uh, you know, I didn't think government run is usually a disaster. And, and it's whether it's city council or whether it's federal or whatever, what it is. I mean, there's a couple of gals here that are all for this, and I ain't saying it's a terrible thing either. If they wanna build it and run it, that's the way it ought to be. You guys have, you know, i- it's just a government-run thing is, is a, is a mistake.
Anyone else?
Yes, Scott?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think the advantage we have is the lake, and that is a big draw. So I think if you look at the potential events that could be at this center, it's, a, a lot of them can be lake-centered. And, you know, we're looking to the future, so I guess we need to decide what we want the future of Lakeview to look like. Do we want it to be a place that our kids will wanna come back to, will wanna live, will wanna expand? And there are things that are going on around the lake. It's not just weddings or card games that could be held with this. It should be big enough with big doors to let some boat shows, to let some fishing shows. Look at when we, as a community, got together to clean up the lake. How many more fishermen love to come to the lake and how it's been a poster child for like the state of Iowa of cleaning up this lake. So, you know, we can, to the future, this isn't gonna be built really for, you know, by the time we get the grants for a couple of years. So I just think looking forward, really making a big splash about our lake. And this is an event center which can make advantage of the lake. So, you know, I think it's something to move forward with. It's a concept at this point. And basically, we're asking the city council to say, we support, the city would support the concept of moving forward. The city would support and be able to financially support the ability to write some grants. We don't get any of the grant money. This center doesn't get built. If we don't try, you know, the grant, granting companies are not going to give the city money for the event center without the city being willing to put up some funds. So I think the deal is, say to the city, hey, I wanna support the lake for the cleanup. If you put in some money for that, wanna support the community for a community center. The city just says, yeah, if you guys come back with all the funds from the grants, you know, we'll move, we'll move forward with the concept. It's not a done deal. We don't have the grant money yet at all. But we can't even write the grant money without some skin in the game from the city, and I think that's good. So I think it's something we should consider. If people are willing to write grants, that's not an easy process. Go for it. That's it.
Thanks, Catherine. What council do you wanna do? Give them a chance to raise it or not?
Can I, can I speak once, please?
Sure.
My name's Dale Beckman. I've talked to you guys several times. And last time we had people run the city council, one of the topics was a place for people to build houses in this town. That was gonna be a high priority. I haven't seen anything done by the city for that yet. We had private things done, which you told me the other night, that's supposed to be private. I asked you about, you know, if we got $500,000 laying around, we should be able to use that towards our sewer race to lower. You said, you use it, you pay. Well, how many people in the city of Lakeview are gonna use the event center we get? We have to pay for it. We're taking $500,000 of our money that's in tip and putting it towards it. Correct? That's the proposal today.
That's the proposal.
So you're using $500,000 of our money, but we're not using it. We know that the people of Lakeview did not support Lakewood when it was here. That's a proven fact. You can ask any business that lived here for 20-plus years that would know that. I think an event center would be absolutely outstanding to have in Lakeview. Just not city-owned. It needs to be privately owned. If we got $500,000, let's work in a development area for people to build houses in this town. And we know that needs to be done. That's a proven fact. Because it doesn't take long to sell a piece of ground when you have it in the right spot. And if the city would move, move forward with that, then we have more revenue to support the event center. I agree with Donnie. I agree with Rich. I agree with Mike. Some of the numbers are a little off. I agree with Paul. I think it'd be a great place to have, and we gotta have stuff like that to move forward. If this is such a great idea, we had a, we had an information meeting last week on Tuesday, and now on Monday you're voting to move forward with more stuff. Let's put more time to the people, the public in Lakeview so they know what's going on. Why are we rushing? If this is that big of a deal and that good of a deal, we shouldn't need to rush. You guys all think it's, I don't know if you think it's good or not good, but if it's that good, we don't need to rush something that good. It's not going away tomorrow. I ask you to take your time and think about this and get input from the public. That's what needs to be done, because we are a public community and this is a public event center. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to say one thing. I, I think we ought to, oh, excuse me. We, uh, you know, the people of Lakeview, the residents of Lakeview, they're the ones that put all five of us here. And I think they ought to have a say in this. I think they, we ought to have a vote and see who wants this and who don't. That's where it needs to start, I think. Not because it's a, just one committee.
Just again, the concept of a referendum, though, Terry.
I ain't talking about money. I'm talking about whether it's just need to know who wants this and who don't. I'm talking about the money.
It, it, it can't be a formal vote then, that way. That, that's my point, I guess. You can't just do a referendum on questions.
It would be a formal question and an informal answer.
Not like at the polls. I mean, it, it just can't, it can't happen that way.
What about a door-to-door survey?
Right.
It would, if we did, if you do something like that, it would be more of an, of an informal type of an arrangement like that.
I just think it's people's.
It's a handful of people wanting this and there's, say, 50 people wanting it and there's 700 in the community that don't.
How do you know that?
Well, that's why we're asking for a vote.
We're asking for the public to, for a survey. If, if the majority wants it, great. I'm all for it. I think it'd be a great ask.
Do you think, do you think if we give this tip money out, okay, I'm just saying, it's earmarked. I'm not saying to spend it earmarked. Don't you think you'd be able to tell by the fundraising? If, you know, if nobody's given anything, that's pretty much a good sign that it's not gonna pass. I mean, you know what?
There could still be a handful of people.
Right.
Well, people are always willing to give money for bricks and mortar, till once it's built and it's gonna cost you about $5,000 a month, then it's a sour puss.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And that, I, I think the, the difference between the first meeting that we, when they took a, uh, stake for this, that was one of my biggest concerns, was a business plan. We've got a business plan, you know, again, we could be under, we could be over, but we won't know unless we get, get something started just to, to look at and just, uh, get a feel for it. I mean, if nobody's volunteering any money, then, you know, a handful of people aren't gonna change this. And when I say change it, the money's not there, so we can't build it.
But cash flowed in the end, too.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the, the thing about that with the, with the, nobody knows anything about what's happening, but I think we'll attract more people just because we do have the lake. I understand, Donnie, you looked at, uh, at Brita, you know, you talked about eight drinks and, you know, I came for Brita. That was just a warm-up, so. So, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm. I, nobody here's got the, nobody really got the answer here, whether, you know, you guys are part of the guys that are for it, but you're not. Why be, why be scared of that?
It's a million and a half dollar gamble with our money.
We had $200,000 that you could have bought Lakewood for 14 years ago, and, and it, it wasn't a community thing then. It was, no. Shoot it down. Why, that's a fourth or a, a seventh of the money.
And the owners of the Lakewood at that time were probably three of the shrewdest, shrewdest and sharpest businessmen I, I've ever met.
Mary, do you have something?
I do.
Please.
I wanna address some of the concerns here tonight. It, it seems there's a, um, a voice, um, from this group here about getting the community input and, and Terry asked that as well, and we have done that. That was completed twice in our community through the community survey.
No, that's not accurate. It did not say city-owned.
It is a community center. It is a community center.
You ask all of us, we always said we want a community center, but when you state city-owned, that changes the mind of a lot of people.
It has to be operated by someone, and you, and you guys have not stepped up to the plate.
If it's such a good deal, get your cash out and, and fund it. Get your one-tenth out.
I have a full-time job. No, thank you. But we, as a community, think about where we were 15 years ago. The Stone Pier concerts, the playground that we put in, the splash pad that we did. All of those projects have brought new people to our community time and time again. As you all know, I work, um, for a college, and one of our professors did a tour of all the lake communities in Iowa this summer because he was off with COVID. Okay, this is a seasoned traveler. He came to me when we were back on campus and said, Mary, I have to talk to you about Lakeview. And I said, oh, boy. I said, Professor, how can I help you? He said, I went to all the lake communities in Iowa this summer. By far, Lakeview is outstanding. You have so much going on. So many things are happening. It's beautiful. The community is welcoming. He's like, whatever you're doing over there, keep it going. You outshine those other communities by far and large. It is outstanding. None of that would have happened without a group of volunteers that are committed to this community for progress and growth. They're not may, maysayers. They don't come to meetings and rebuttal against information that is factual with your guesses and your hindsight and your fear whatsoever.
Don't tell me about volunteering, maybe. 20 years, 27 years.
I'm at the podium. It's your time to be quiet and my time to talk.
So don't tell me about volunteering.
Do you wanna get to the podium again? Sure can, Dale. I'd be happy to have you as a volunteer sometime to be more helpful.
I've done my time.
Well, maybe it's time for you to do it again. And in response to the four other locations that you researched, that is not our target audience whatsoever, those are, it is my turn to speak and I appreciate you listening. Those are smaller towns. They have no marketing dollars or budget or direction. That makes an enormous difference for any type of project. We have a marketing budget. It is strategic. Our efforts are strategic. That will make a huge impact, as marketing does with any type of venue. Like Paul said, projects where there were a few people that operated in fear and not on facts were against projects, and what happened? Our community grew. We have progress. We have more tax dollars available. This is not the time to stop. It is time to put our foot on the gas and keep moving forward because we don't have a crystal ball. However, if we sit back and are lax, we're gonna be another small community with nothing going on. People don't wanna be here, which means we don't have restaurants, which means we don't have revenue for up and down Main Street. Terry, you know that your business survived off of having the summer people that were here to buy your donuts and what other great items that you and your wife baked, which are still amazing. All of those community businesses thrive because we have people that wanna come to Lakeview in the summertime and throughout the rest of the year, which a community center, which would be more helpful in doing.
I ain't saying you shouldn't have it. I'd just like to see a vote of how many people wanna.
We did the community surveys. People want a community, a community center.
Go door-to-door.
We've done it twice, Terry.
About so?
We've done it twice.
Let's do it one more time.
We don't need to do it another time. It's done. We've heard the voices of the greater community.
Well, Mary, I've said upfront, I think it's a great asset to the community. However, with the expense that you're talking about, and we all know it's not gonna be, you're not gonna show $11,000 profit for a year.
It'll be more.
I, I just about bet I could match the profit that you're gonna make. No, it's, it's, uh, the, the senior citizens in this community are living on fixed incomes. Now, their, their water bill from the utility in Lake, Lakeview alone has gone up. And the bond issue, they just passed for continuing education or to improve the education in this school system here. That hasn't hit your tax rolls yet. You know, I, I think the citizens, the senior citizens deserve to, to find out what, what this thing is gonna cost and what it's about. They need to paint a true picture of the cost upfront and what it's gonna cost to operate on a weekly or monthly basis.
Thanks again, Don. Randy?
I'm from Erie, Blowus, State County Economic and Urban Development. I'm gonna try not to throw myself under the, under the bus by saying too much here. Um, Lakeview's unique, and so is this facility. We've had events at our other centers in the community, and 200 people, they're pretty full. Um, regionally, I'm the chair for Western Iowa Area Advantage Group, and we turn these things away, these events, 'cause we don't have room for 400 people in our county. People who fund the grants, they're not gonna award projects like this if they don't believe in them. And, um, the city's not looking into these tip dollars unless... And the city's not looking into these TIF dollars unless the grants are awarded, so I hope you guys consider that. Also, a facility of this size would increase the hotel motel tax. And that will also help pay for it if that's needed. This also helps support our local establishments and restaurants as well, increasing more economic development in the county. So, I know that communities wanted this for a long time and I hope you don't let them maysayers talk you out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, I'd like to second Randy and the thing is, is that the monies aren't set yet. And it's going to take about a year to get the Great Places grant. So unless the grant writing starts pretty soon, then that three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars will not even be available for more than two years because it takes a long time to go through the grant process. All this thing is asking is for the grant writers to be able to say that the city will help out with the building if the grant is awarded. The granting process, the writing, has to start now. If you're gonna write the grant, you need to start it right now. If there's no input from the city, then chances of getting that three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollar grant are pretty much zero. So, there's not, it's not that the money is already earmarked. It's not that the money is going to definitely be spent for the community center. It's so the grant people can say, the community wants to contribute to this. If we don't get, as I said before, if we don't get any grant money, the building can't be made. But we can't get any grant money without some skin in the game from the city, or at least the city being willing to consider that process. So this is a concept. This is not a done deal at this point. So I think you just need to remember that this vote is so that the people on the committee can apply for grants to see if we can even get money. Who knows? Maybe we'll get two million dollars in grant money. But unless we have some agreement with the city, we put some money in, we'll get.
I just have one more thing. Taking my cap off for work. My daughter got married last year and we went to Manning because Manning had a hotel and they had a bigger facility and that's what she needed. You can't rent campgrounds in other parts of the state, a lot of parts of the state. They don't have a reservation system. You guys have that for your city campground. If you don't have rooms available, you have camping spots during the summer. I know there's a ton of weddings that are leaving our county. They're going to places that have a hotel. And I think if we have an event center this size, we could probably increase our rooms too.
I think, I'm not against some kind of a community input. You know, obviously, I would want the community to support this. I don't think that you guys have all the answers just because you think that you represent the bulk of the city. Because, you know, I hear from other people too. So, I'm not against doing that. This thing is a long ways away. Any action tonight is just letting the process go through the process. Five years ago, that was the problem. It was shut down before it was allowed to go through the process. If they don't raise the grant money, it's not gonna happen. If they don't fundraise for enough money, it's not gonna happen. And I disagree with the fact that people are gonna give money and then they're not ever gonna give money again. In the research we've done on these, that's not been the case. There are people that continue to commit funds. You know, I hate to compare it to a swimming pool because that's not a very profitable thing either. But that's kind of an amenity. That's what this is. It's an amenity for the community so that people want to live here. One of the things in the last interviews we did, that we interviewed out-of-state people for a position here, three out of the four commented on how many events we have in this community and what we have going on all the time because they've done their homework, because they can do it online. It's all out there. They said, you know, we don't want to be in some small town that doesn't do anything, so, you know, I'm for progress, obviously. I'm not for building something that's gonna go in the hole. But I think you ought to let the process go through. So today, all we would do is allow the committee to start fundraising would be to earmark the TIF money back for this project, not giving it away. The TIF money will be the last entry. It's just saying, well, the committee's pledged this TIF, so if I want to apply for the four hundred thousand dollar Great Places grant, there's my match. You have to have community support to go through with grants and if you shut it off before then, you have, you have no chance to go through grants. I had this argument when we wanted to do the splash pad. You can't shut something down and not give any support to it and then expect people to go out and raise money. It doesn't work that way. I've not been an active part of this committee. I have sat in on this committee. I don't think that takes my vote away at all. I sit in on P and Z meetings. I sit in on variance, library, all kinds of things. I still vote on those issues. Part of the Great Places application, part of the reason that Brad wrote the app for that, part of the reason we got that designation was because we had in there that we were gonna do a large project community center. So you can't just pull the plug on that and say, well, they gave you this Great Places, but now we don't want to do that. Let the community, let the whole process go and it'll either prove to be profitable or it will prove not to be. It will either prove to be supported by the community or it will prove not to be. But you have to go through the process and all we're doing tonight is saying, we'll earmark TIF money if you're able to come up with everything else. And I don't think you can just throw everything this committee has done for five years out the window in one night and say, well, I don't believe their figures. They've spent five years on this. They've had professionals look at it. I just think they deserve a chance. I thought it five years ago and I think it now. I'm not gonna support something the community doesn't want, but I think we have time to find out what the community wants. And I'm making a motion that we go ahead and earmark the TIF money in case that the committee is able to raise the funds for this. You can't use TIF for everything. You can't use it for infrastructure, you know. And the housing, I'm all for the housing too. We've not been able to identify any land, but since I got on the council, we now have a housing committee that we would sure like to have people come and serve on. We have an economic development committee that we'd sure like to have people come and serve on, anybody really. The more people you get, the more ideas you have. Anyway, I'm making the motion that we authorize them to move ahead with this contingent on them raising the funds.
I just have a couple comments on this and, Don, you're right, I was really against this before. This project is two million dollars less than what the estimated project was in the beginning. As far as the TIF financing, even if it was a private entity that wanted to do it, we would probably encourage it with that part of the financing also with TIF funds. We did that with Boulders, you know, used TIF monies to help a private entity do that. So, on the expenses part versus the usage part, if it's not used as much as they think it is, then our expenses will be down a little bit also. But I've been to every one of the places around here and talked to individuals from Sack City and Old Oak and stuff and, you know, I have a hard time agreeing sometimes with Vicki. But in this situation, I've had an opportunity to look at other places and stuff. We will have a lot more to offer than other neighboring event centers or whatever you want to call this because we're by the lake and everything. And again, Vicki stated this is a process. It's not a done deal. I'd like to see what, where that process takes us as far as raising the money, as far as the grants. The five hundred thousand, we would probably spend that regardless of the TIF money for the project, whether it be somebody else doing it or the city doing it. When you look at this proposal versus the Dennison proposal that I spoke about before, this is scaled way back from that proposal that we were looking at in the first go-around. So I guess I'm in favor of making, allowing this process to go forward because I would be voting for that five hundred thousand TIF to either go for, either for the private or the publicity. So, with that said, I guess I, I'm swinging more in favor of this. Because it's different than what, to me, I'm looking at it differently than I did in the beginning. If that makes sense.
Is that a second to the motion? We'll call it.
I want to make sure I got this right, that the motion would be to earmark the TIF funds contingent upon the committee raising needed funds through grants and private donations? Tom's?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Reese?
Oh.
Oler?
I have been on the committee the whole time, so I'll accuse myself.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Thanks for the hometown pride. There's a lot of words going into this. Okay, now we're gonna talk about our Sack County Endowment Grants. Our cabins.
Okay, take a look at your council packet there. Kevin's information is on page five. We're proposing then to have three Sack County Endowment Grant applications. One would be a small grant application again for the historic kiosks that the HBC has been doing, two of these per year, and they would do two more again next year. That would be the final year of a five-year project. Second thing would be a sidewalk enhancement and this is in the seven hundred block of Fifth Street on the south side there. This is Whittaker Apartments and then Uptown. If, this would be the final phase of the Black Hawk to Downtown urban loop. Other than that, all of the sidewalks in that loop are, will have been replaced and upgraded. Third one is, is then on page twenty-five, is a proposal on the cabins. So Mayor Westergaard and I went on a little trip last week, no, week before, to take a look at some of these buildings. Now, just knowing that they're, they are just sheds, you know, it's a shed, but in this case, the shed is twelve by twenty-four, but six feet of that would be a porch. The picture that you see is much longer than that. Okay, this would be roughly the same square footage as what's down in the one that's there right now. So, the cost on these is about seventy-five hundred dollars for the, for the, for the building itself. And we would propose that that would sit on a concrete slab. The interior would have electricity and would only be wired for electricity. And then the interior would be finished then with a knotty pine finish. So we get a little bit of cabin, we'll put it on the inside instead of the outside. Also, I guess just bearing in mind this is, I gotta get that stuff ready for a grant application on Friday. So if we want to take a look at other design options and whatnot, we sure can. The other thing about this is they're, and you look at the next page, you can see that they're just stud wall design. And we would put electric in there, spray foam the interior. And John Meredith was gonna give me some numbers on that.
We'll need a motion to authorize our applications.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
We'll call it.
Oler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, we need to talk about Camp Crescent Staffing.
Yeah, we're thinking about the notion of succession planning then down at the campground and how we can look for leadership here in subsequent years. What we will propose here is that we want to look at taking applications for manager position. That we take applications for that, for the manager while having Ruth on and available for a full year's worth of transition time. I know we had talked about that a little bit, about going down this road. And I would just propose then that the city would advertise for the manager's position. Just advertise locally, Lakeview Resort, Troy County Special, you know, do that stuff as soon as possible. Proposed application due date would be November ninth, so we're getting things established in the fall about what the leadership of campground would look like next year. We'd like to have discussion about wage and what that would be.
What's the current hourly rate?
Fourteen thirty.
Ruth, you've been underpaid.
I don't know what I get. Give me my check.
You know, the thing I want to say is, I want to thank Ruth publicly for everything she's done. Chat with her once in a while and it's not an easy job, that's for sure, so, you know, we're, we appreciate the fact that she'll try to mentor someone into this position. The campground gross revenue was way up this year on a year when we thought, you know, we thought with COVID, right away, COVID was gonna impact our road use tax. It was gonna, you know, impact our lost revenue. Not to say that it hasn't, but not to the degree that we thought and mostly because we are a tourism town. So some of the communities are hurting a lot more than we are. You know, that's another reason that I like to keep things progressive. I think it pays off. I think we have so many more people come here because of that splash pad. I wish we had stats on it because I live across the street and it has brought buses in from other schools. The money that has generated, I think you can't even put your finger on it. I think people camp here a lot because of the splash pad. Do I have data to back it up? Not really, other than the fact that the campground revenue is way up this year. And so I think there's lots of things we can offer down there and I hope that Ruth will help us transition.
First time the campground is empty today since March twenty-sixth. Last one pulled out today.
Well, the plumbers are still there. We're okay.
I think they're frozen in that hole.
I think, you know, with going through the changes the police department's had lately, you know, I kind of regret too because I think the wages need to be raised. I think, I think you don't get good quality people, although we have. We have gotten Ruth at a pretty good price, but I feel like if you're, if you want to get quality people and you want to keep them, that we need to pay a decent wage, so, I don't know. I was thinking about close to twenty dollars an hour. It's a part-time position. I don't know what the other council members are thinking.
That's probably the ballpark anyway because you get fifteen dollars for the hamburgers in McDonald's or wherever. I mean, that's, that's, there's a lot of responsibility down there. We know, as a city... down there, we know, as, as a city, we've, we've invested a lot of money down there into that campground, just for the fact that we're trying to cater to different people with bigger equipment and stuff like that, so that's, that's the way it's going, so I think it's, to me, I kind of agree with that, so. Anybody else?
Sounds good.
We'll have to have a motion to advertise at that wage.
Ray, don't confuse the question, Michelle.
Go ahead.
I don't really have a question, but if you're going to increase the rate, the rate to twenty dollars an hour and the campground made money, which was put in the paper, forty thousand at that last point, probably made more money, I think Ruth deserves some kind of bonus for this year. Fourteen to twenty, that's six dollars more an hour.
We'll give it some thought, how's that?
Yep.
I need a motion to put that in the paper at twenty bucks, is that what you want to do? That's a motion from Vicki?
That's a motion.
That's a motion, you second? We'll call it.
Tom's? Thank you.
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Holden?
Before we get too far along, just in case, our new police chief is Brandon, remember? This is the night to meet him, don't meet him when he's in the car.
Just a couple of real things, I didn't even put an administrative report on the agenda this time, what's wrong with me?
We're going to do it anyway.
Yeah, here's our good news from, for the day, we got our health insurance renewal this, today and the health insurance will be going up one point one percent. And just a little update on Camp Crescent construction project, that they've been working primarily on the, on the sewer and the sewer mains are, are in and they started to work on the, on the dumps at each site, I'm not sure if those were finished yet or not, but, so that's, we're at with that. And then what they did is graded the entire site to what the subgrade is for the pads, so they lay the pads right on, on top of the site as it is right now and then they'll fill back in around the pads when they're done. And that's just contractor's preference on there.
You know, to the utility staff, anytime they're doing any digging, they need to mark it.
What does that mean?
Put some stakes in the ground with the whole ground?
Yes.
We did that after, yeah.
That at all?
Okay, the council's going to close session, thanks for everybody showing up. A motion going to close session. Second? We'll call it. Thanks, everybody for coming.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you. Thank you.
The day before.
How you doing?
Lovely.
It's so, it's so hard to see you and I was going to have the mask, I definitely don't recognize you.
Welcome to the view.
Welcome to the view.
Probably appreciate this after a little.
Yeah, nice to meet you guys. And the girl that goes back to the right. He's stabbing.
I told her to speed up, I was like.
You want to take the work sometime?
Drive school bus in the morning and afternoon.
Yeah.